...meeting of the Tigard-Tualatin School Board. I will call the meeting to order at 6:31 PM. And just to let folks know, we did meet prior to this meeting in a work session that really talked around about our culture of inclusion here in TTSD. So with that, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes.
All right, hearing that, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
A motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
I second. Motion was made by Vice Chair Hames and seconded by Director Zerchmead. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll move to a coral vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, and with that, we will move to our recognition and good news. First with Director Kinch. And friends.
Yes, I would like to invite Kelly, Alice Drew, Hunter, and Renee up to the... So tonight, with so much pride, I get to share with you, or I get to have some friends from the WISE program who are going to share a little bit about what the WISE program is. And you also have heard there's some cheerleaders in the back of parents and other fellow students and some of our assistants. So I'm going to have Alice Alaman, one of our teachers, start the presentation.
All right. Okay, great. Hi. I just wanted to introduce the WISE program and just give a brief overview. I've been doing this for almost eighteen years in the Tigard-Tualatin School District. Our WISE program stands for Work Skills Independent Living, Social Skills, Educational Skills for students who are working towards post-secondary goals and who are between eighteen and twenty-one and are still Tigard-Tualatin School District students. They're working on post-secondary goals in the community and in our collaborative classrooms. And if we can go to the next slide, we have two hubs. Our first hub, our main hub where our offices are, is at the Rise Church, which is right up the road here. That's where our main classrooms, our office, and our hub for community training. And you can see some of the amazing students and community and classroom activities going on there. The next slide. We also have coordination with Portland Community College Sylvania Campus for some of our students who are kind of moving into the next independent level. Again, you can see it's a hub for our community training with TriMet, with community work sites, and also some classroom experiences. And then next slide. In order to do that, we have an amazing staff. As you can see up here, I'm not going to go through all the names, but we have eleven LSAs, we have three WISEs, three, sorry, eleven amazing WISE LSAs. And then three WISE learning specialists. We also have Erin Kelly, who's our autism specialist and facilitator, and our SLPs. And then the most important part is the next slide. Our amazing students, which we have two here today, we have two here in the audience. And Hunter is going to speak about some things that he has learned while at WISE. And just as a pre... Hunter, this is his third year with us.
Yeah. Yes, this is my third year with us at the Rise.
Wow, that's loud.
Very funny, you guys. Anyways, some of the things I've learned at Rise are work skills with the cafe, the library, and PCC. And my social skills of being respectful towards one another and independent skills with being in the community. Yes, my name's Hunter Sellers. I've been at the WISE program for almost three years. This is my last year. I think it is a great program for those that are wanting to help out in the community and those that are wanting to get a job. On Mondays, I go to the Garden Home, we go to the Garden Home Recreation Center and go to the gym. Excuse me. I do kickboxing and basketball, and sometimes I walk. On Tuesdays and Wednesdays, I go to PCC and eat lunch in the community center. I work on banking and doing job sites on the campus. Thursdays, I do a cooking lesson in the morning, and sometimes in the afternoon, we go to the library, and sometimes I go to Bottle Drop. On Fridays, it is fun Friday, we sometimes watch a movie, go in the community, or go to the park. My favorite thing about WISE is the people. The people there are great. They are very nice, who are kind and respectful to me. Thank you, guys, for listening.
And then our first-year student, next slide, is Drew, who's going to tell us some things about WISE.
Hi, guys. Hi, guys. My name is Drew. Why is the wonderful about WISE is the people. I like to be at Rise with all of those dinners, with our staff. I have learned to be kind to others and kind to myself. I have learned to follow the rules and to listen to teachers. I will listen to my bosses. When I get a job at Burger Bell, we go to Bottle Drop in the gym. We went to run them, the dogs, the dog store, and to the capital, capitalize to learn about jobs. My favorite part of WISE is cooking. We made pancakes. My wife's gonna feed me. My divorcees does peanut cakes. I like living by the simple. I like doing crafts on Tuesday a lot. Thank you, friends.
And our last, our last slide. These are some of our community partnerships this year. It does change year to year, just depending on who's wanting to partner with us. So if you have any connections in the community, please reach out to us for maybe work sites or community exploration. Thanks so much.
So before you get, well, Director Kinch. As I say, before you guys leave, we may have questions or comments for you folks that did an amazing job. So anyone want to start us off?
I would love to. I don't know if you guys remember, but I came by WISE to visit a couple of months ago. And I remember, Hunter, your cooking in the classroom, and you are a fine chef. Thank you, Jill. It's an amazing program, and I'm super glad to see you guys here. I wanted to ask you, Hunter, this is your third year. You're going to be graduating this year?
Yes, I'm going to be leaving after this year.
So are you excited? Are you sad? Are you scared? A little bit of everything?
A little bit of everything. I'm going to, pretty, I'm actually going to miss all my friends that go here right now, but are going to be here next year and the year after. So people like Daniel and Braylon and Eric, if you guys are listening, you guys are awesome.
Anyone else? Why? Vice Chair?
I just want to say thank you for coming and showing off your program to us. Well, I mean, our program, everybody's program. And just the tenacity to be able to, you know, finish and, like you, that you're in your last year, right? You're just beginning the program, but still, right? It's just being able to accomplish this is amazing. So thank you so much for coming and just gracing us with your presence.
You're welcome.
I have a question.
What's up?
What's, what's one thing that, either, so either Hunter or Drew, what's one thing that you would want people to know about WISE that they don't know? You can both answer.
Yeah. WISE is a, is a great place that are, for those that may be wanting to get a job or potentially go in the community. Thank you, guys, for making the TTSD a really great school district. And I just want to say thank you, guys.
I had a question for you.
I'm ready.
So, so I had to learn about Bottle Drop. I had my job to do. And from the Bottle Drop, I do with Charlotte and Grace. It's really beautiful day. It's like, I don't know what you're talking about, or if those things of my life is hard for me, or I love all of those people. I love my heart, and I love my staff, my dinners, and enjoy yourself.
Thank you so much for sharing, Drew.
Those are great. Director Miles, you had something, and then Director Wilson?
Thank you for sharing. There's such good energy about this program and what you shared and what you're sharing tonight. Really appreciate hearing from you. I'm sure there are a lot more people that could come up and speak about this program. I want to come visit. I love, love what you shared tonight. Thank you so much for, for, for providing a place for folks to learn skills. And I really like the fact that, like, you can work toward finding a job and just real practical life stuff. So it sounds like you really enjoy it. Thank you for sharing.
And I just also wanted to say thank you. Really appreciate you all spending your time here and coming out to meet with us and sharing some of your good work with the community. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thanks, and come visit anytime.
And I just, I'll finish by saying, number one, it takes, it's really hard sitting over there at that desk and talking to all of us here. As a grown-up, I have to do that every once in a while, and it's very, it takes a lot of courage. So really great job, Drew and Hunter, for giving such a really great presentation. And I was in DC last week talking to one of our representatives in Congress, and I told her about the WISE program and how she might want to come visit sometime. So I will keep you apprised of that. And also, what's really fun is I see around our community, like Trader Joe's, some of our current and/or former WISE students. And so it's really, it's fun to seeing those connections still going strong around the community. So thank you, and for teachers that are a part of that, thank you so much. I mean, this is, it's an incredible program. It's life-changing for all of us involved and all of you involved, I'm sure, too. So thank you so much. Do you want a picture?
Yes, and I also wanted to recognize two of our current WISE students, Kira and Abigail back here as well.
I see Kira, yep.
Who just got off work.
Want to do a picture? Okay, he's probably official, I'm not, but hey, we'll go. Oh, one, two, three, cheese, Abigail and Kira and Drew and Hunter. Ta-da. All right, and we have our next recognition and good news presentation with the TTSD BSU and Lisa Putton.
Well, good evening, Chair Urban, Vice Chair Hames, board members, our student representatives, and Dr. Udo Senata. I wanted to begin by thanking you first for supporting the proclamation for Black History Month in the consent agenda this evening. And then here with me today are students from Tigard High and Tualatin High School. We'll start with Tualatin High School Black Student Union representatives, and then we'll do that. Go ahead, Director.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having us here today. My name is Campbell. I'm a senior at Tualatin High School, and I'm our BSU president.
I'm Co-C. I'm a sophomore at Tualatin High School, and I'm the vice president of Tualatin High School BSU.
Today, we are going to be highlighting one major event for our BSU and taking, talking about some future events and goals and planning, explaining the purpose of all of it. I'm excited to talk about an event that isn't just an important, important for our school, but for our entire community. It's our first-ever Portland Metro BSU Culture Fest. It's not just another Black History Month event. It's about shifting the narrative, creating real impact, and celebrating black culture in ways that goes beyond what we're used to seeing. Black History Month often feels like people are checking a box rather than actually making a difference, and performative actions don't create lasting change. And that's where BSU Culture Fest comes in. We are hosting this event with Lakewood's BSU, and I've been planning this event with Lakewood for a couple of months now. A big focus we have for this year is to further engagement within our larger communities. Networking is a big part of that as well. So we've been extending invites and working with BSUs around Portland Metro, including Tigard, as well as like Central Catholic, Jesuit, and other schools as well. This event is about giving directly back to the black community. We've been working with different leaders from black-owned businesses who will be participating in cultural workshops and also be leading panels. We're working and partnering with various organizations, nonprofits, and businesses for vendoring, tabling performances, and et cetera. We are not just doing one day of action. This event is about providing the knowledge and tools people need to create lasting change. We want our community to walk away from Culture Fest feeling inspired and equipped to continue this work in their daily lives. So a big part of this event is going to be about like the impact seen through like the panel and other resources. And most importantly, we're just shifting focus of Black History Month, not just on like trauma and pain that is often seen, but also about joy, success, and action. We're here to celebrate the beauty and resilience of black culture while pushing for real change and narrative. So some focuses of the event is like community engagement, where we'll be creating spaces where people have honest conversations and ask tough questions with leaders of the black community. We'll be having a panel focused on black success and leadership and joy, asking different panelists from different organizations what all those things mean to them and how young activists and leaders in our communities can further those actions for themselves. And our ultimate goal is to make sure that it isn't just like a one-off celebration, although this is the first ever like Culture Fest. We're hoping to make an event that will continue for years to come. And we are hoping, just to maximize the impact of our Culture Fest, we could have you guys' support, not just in words, but also in action. So if you guys would like promote this event, we'd love for the district to share info about this event on newsletters, social media, and school announcements, because the more people who know, the bigger the impact. Second would be institutional backing, encouraging district-wide participation, which shows students that it isn't just a student-led initiative, but it's something valued at every level of leadership. And also, finally, ongoing support, so to partner with us to ensure that this event isn't just a moment, but part of a larger movement within our schools. And with enough said, I hope that you can see you and your own communities at our event on February 22nd from 12 to 3 at Lakewood High School.
And as far as future events and initiatives go, Tualatin High School's Black Student Union, thank you, is planning to participate in our high school's Unity Week. Unity Week is held for one week in April to unify the student body as each affinity group takes the lead on different activities throughout the week. In years past, we have mainly used this week to focus on mental health, stigmas, as well as building helpful communities with our school while simultaneously highlighting the different resources, such as our neighborhood health centers and our onsite mental health experts. We're also planning to fundraise for the Urban League of Portland at some point before the end of the school year, and we actually ended up choosing the Urban League because it's an organization that not only provides resources for long-term success, but also acknowledges those on different paths of life. And more so, their mission is to empower black people in the Portland metro area to achieve equality in education, employment, health, economic security, and quality of life. We're also figuring out how we are going to fundraise specifically, but we do know that we want to make an impact in our community. For Black History Month in particular, our Black Student Union has had valuable club meetings surrounding the importance of growth. And in order to translate this throughout the rest of Tualatin High School, we were able to utilize educational posters and hang them up around the halls and in our library, like this one. Surely Chills Home's journey of pushing toward a dream even when it feels impossible is a strong character trait that can ever so slightly inspire those who take a glance at one of our posters as they're walking to their next class.
And in terms of one of our major upcoming events is this leadership conference hosted at Portland State run by BEAM, which also stands for Black Educational Achievement Movement. This event is an annual, one-day-only leadership summit that focuses on empowering and educating black youth in the Pacific Northwest, and I thought it'd be cool if we could attend this event and hopefully Tigard as well.
In the future, in the future, we are also planning on reaching out to other black student unions like Tigard High School's Black Student Union and Tualatin Middle School's Black Student Union. Thank you all so much for having us.
That was amazing. Wow. Okay, well, all I have is a little speech for y'all, so. So yeah, I'm Zoe Ray Upda. I go to Tigard High School, and I'm the vice president of the Black Student Union there. Unfortunately, my president couldn't make it today, so I kind of scrapped up with this in the last minute. Essentially, what I'm going to be talking about today is a field trip we went on. The field trip is called the Black College Expo. It was held on January 16th, and this was run by the National College Resource Foundation, who is a nonprofit educational organization. I found them on Instagram via ad posts, and they created it talking about how they're going to be coming to the Portland area. Based on their Instagram, it looks like they go to many different states. I think after Portland, they're going to Seattle, then other states, but essentially, they come here. Amazingly, without surprise, the tickets were free. So that was really awesome. And there wasn't a limit of how many could come, so it was just the twelve of us, but there was groups. We use, they used a website called Eventbrite, which made the purchasing the tickets very easy. The Black Student Union really enjoyed the experience. The twelve of us students attended the Tigard High, oh, wow, twelve students attended from Tigard High. They all agreed that the ride wasn't too long there, and yet they still got to enjoy the ride of view of Portland. When we got there, the line wasn't too long to get inside, but there was a bunch of different schools with other students, especially students who looked like us, which was something these students don't really get at a predominantly white institution. But I think there was like roughly around fifty colleges and universities there, kind of showing that, hey, I'm here. Members from the expo to be very educational, meeting with their potential in-state colleges' choices, really helped them understand their options more clearly, like the scholarships and the tuitions we're offering for living state, or the scholarships they could get if they had a good GPA. For instance, I think it was Alabama State, they were like, if you sign up for this thing right now, and you have these, you have this GPA and all this criteria, you could probably win this $8,000 scholarship. They did just little educational things that you didn't know. So yeah, they were, they were also very appreciative of all the HBCU represented, represented. Oh, y'all scared me. Okay, that came as they also go there. Yeah, and basically, I was writing down that they got to leave knowing that they could, that they now have more better of an education and the opportunities that they have. At the Black College Expo, they also had seminars, like every forty minutes-ish, that were very beneficial. They had seminars talking about the variety of different topics, like how to think and grow rich, how to start and build a business, where to get my money for col, where to get money for college, and many more different seminars. These seminars were around fifteen, well, for the seminar, we went, the seminar we went to, the guest speaker really gave us, gave two of my members $5 for just showing up on time, trying to show that this is what you can get if you come early, and this will also benefit you in life. That makes sense. Sadly, we did not get to stay long due to other reasons, but when the leaders of the expo saw that we had to leave early, they offered us one last seminar where we got to talk with an actor about why we should pursue our dreams and think about what we want to do now, so we have time to prepare in the future. And then this is a quote from one of the members. She says, "The Black College Expo field trip was eye-opening. While I had one HBCU in mind before, seeing what others showed me was incredible, and just the incredible community and opportunities that they had were really life-changing. It broadened my perspective and deepened my understanding of where I can thrive." And yeah, let's finish it.
All right, questions and comments for our second panel?
I just wanted to say thank you. So many uplifting things, and that was a lot of excellence, and I really appreciate you all putting yourselves out there, doing good things with the community, and thank you so much, and great job.
Skye?
I just wanted to say thank you as well, but I also had a question. For the BSU like Culture Fest, did you guys invite all the schools in the district, or is it mainly just like a high school event?
I feel like I don't need the mic. I feel like we're good.
People online need to be able to hear.
My bad. Okay, we do need the mic. Okay. Yeah, so for the Culture Fest, it's like an all-community event, so like people from all ages, it's family-friendly. But yeah, the way we are working, I'm like inviting everyone is just specifically through the school district to start off with, but then after that, I mean, we extend an invite from like to schools all over Portland Metro. So we have like people from like McDaniel, Central Catholic, like all around there, but yeah, mainly like through our school district, too.
Thank you. I also just want to applaud you. That is a huge thing to take on, especially since it's never been done before, so thank
So I want to say regarding the Culture Fest, I loved how you had success and joy as two of your main points. I love the idea that it doesn't have to be just work. It should be joyful, and that's one of the things we try really hard to, to talk about as part of education, that you learn better when you're happy, right? When it's a joyful thing, when it's not hard work. So I love that you did that, so thank you for doing that. And I wanted to say regarding the, the Black College Expo, is this an annual thing? Or do you not know?
I have no idea. This was like the first year I found out about it. It looks like they've been doing this constantly, but yeah, this was just an event that we went to, and they held here. I mean, I hope it's annually. Again, everyone loved it, and we hope that we could go.
Because it seems like if it's an annual thing, even if it's not always in Portland, if it's somewhere nearby, that would be something like in the future for you guys to like schedule a field trip with, to, and so that maybe you could have a little more time there, because it sounds like an amazing event, and the college application and scholarship stuff is really important information for students. And I also wanted to say thank you all. I know you guys are nervous and did a great job.
Yeah, yeah, my advisor slash principal for BS, she loved it. She really did. She was like, oh, my God, all these black people here, they're amazing. It was, yeah, she loved it. She loved it.
But Director Miles?
Thank you for sharing. Really appreciate hearing about all of the opportunities that being part of the BSU affords you and that you create for yourselves. Love that you talked about all the partnerships that you form with community organizations and the Black College Expo. Also sounded like that was a lot of opportunities, too, that that afforded you. I also want to say that coming here to talk- I also want to say that coming here to talk about this does not just inform the board, but it informs the community and the rest of the district. A lot of people, well, we hope a lot of people listen, right? But talking about what you do in public and what you're involved in is really important. That gets the word out there about what you do and quite frankly makes other people interested in being involved as well. So really appreciate you coming and talking about that.
And I just want to take the opportunity to thank you for being here and being great ambassadors of the Black community and of your schools. And it's not easy to sit up there, like Chair Urban said. It is tough, so we appreciate you being up here. And I really love the message that you all are sharing of empowerment, of community, of unity, and then inclusion and bringing people together. So keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you so much for coming and sharing with us all these wonderful things that you guys are doing here at Tiger Twolton and for sharing your experience of your clubs, your affinity spaces with us. And I don't know if you guys got a chance to look at the resolution that was on the consent agenda, and if not, hopefully you'll look at it. You know, some of the things that are under are, you know, us pledging that, you know, we're gonna study Black history and just learn about the history that has happened in the US. And, you know, there's all sorts of Black history interwoven into everything that, you know, that we're doing here in Tiger Twolton. But also I know that we're still lacking in ensuring that we are just weaving everything in, right? You know, I know that with our Latino students, right, we don't really do that great of a job of teaching that part of history as well as, you know, our Black and African-American students. They usually have that thoughts of, is there more to us than just February, right? Is there more to us than Black History Month? And I just, not to put you on the spot, but just wanted to see, is there anything else that we can do to further, you know, just alleviate that sense of not belonging in our school system?
That is a lot. I don't, I don't really like seeing problems that like I don't even have a resolution to. I mean, you did bring up an excellent point in which like I think some of us may feel that, again, maybe not just the month, but more of like Black History is all about the bad parts, which need to continue being told about. We can't just not forget about it. But it would be amazing if even at a young age, we were taught about the amazing things about Black culture and being a part of that. So yeah, that's my little snippet.
Just like a clarifying question, like what are specifically used in the resolutions that you guys passed about Black History?
Well, I mean, we could, normally we've read these, but I think they have a, do you have a copy there? We can, we can get you guys a copy. I have it, but. So, you know, we talked about National Black History Month is a national tradition established in response to inadequate and oftentimes biased depictions of Black history and representation of African-American communities in history books and school curriculum. You know, like I said, there's talks about we pledge to study Black history, learn, acknowledge, and disrupt the system built to hold back our Black citizens and especially our Black students every day. The study of African-American life and history has dedicated Black History Month 2024, 25 to honor Black health and wellness and, you know, things like that. So I don't know if you wanna read this, or I think you guys have one.
And I would just finish while you're looking at that also by just, I'm continually impressed by our student presenters and really how incredibly informative. I mean, it's, like I said before and was reiterated, I can kind of plus one my notes from what everybody else has said, but really just, it's so fun. Like this is what makes this role and this job really meaningful is to hear from the students, because that's who we are ultimately serving. And so I just, I'm always so impressed and love when we get to hear from all of you. And to kind of plus one, I love the challenge for all of us to not be performative in our sort of celebration or our kind of like what are, we need to really walk all of our talk. And so I appreciate that reminder. And also, like folks have said, recognizing and knowing the trauma, but it's also about the joy. And so I just kind of want to plus one that, and we will absolutely be promoting events, certainly on our own socials as well as I'm assuming the school districts. So thank you all for coming and keeping us in the loop of what's going on. And again, any ways that we can help and continue to do better, that's what we want to know. So thank you so much. Do we want a picture before they?
Wait, can I just say something real quick for your thing? I feel like just to answer your question, just about like what we can all do like better to like, I don't know, further the study of Black history and also just like Black excellence and stuff. I just feel like a lot of it has to do with like curriculum and culture within our schools. I think a lot of it, like in our history classes, we kind of just only learn about slavery. And I know that in our curriculums, like yes, that is important to learn about, but there's a lot more to Black history and honestly, just all people of color and their history as well. So I feel like it's important for us to like start making steps in our curriculums to like not just only encourage, but like have opportunities for students to learn about these things, but also like kind of to make it required to where you have to learn about all of this. And then also I think just like encouraging accessibility and opportunity in our schools, because I feel like a lot of students don't know about things that are even going on within their communities, like the HBCU College Expo or whatever. Like there's a good amount of Black students at Twolton or in like the middle schools or whatever that would still value those experiences as well. So I think it also is just like a culture and like staff initiative that has to come as well to make sure that like all students are like aware and educated of the things that are going on in their schools.
That's excellent.
Thank you. Thank you. Like I said, I did want to put you guys on the spot, but I did want to hear from you what your thoughts were, because we don't want to be, like what you said, just performative and be like, oh yeah, it's February. We want you guys to come, you know, all the time and come to us and let us know that we are serving you as best as we can. So thank you.
So we're gonna have you come up here, and thank you to the advisors and everybody back there too. But come up here for a picture. And yeah.
You don't have to duck.
We're not that short. We're not that short.
We're good. We're good. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here.
All right, and with that, we will move to our student representative reports. Whoever wants to go first? Okay, Skye?
Okay, so at Twolton High School, we have a lot of events happening and events that have happened. So last Friday, the 7th, we had our annual Timber Wolf Pageant, which was a huge success. We raised roughly about $12,500 from all of the teams, and that's all going towards Dornbeckers Children's Hospital, which to my knowledge, I guess we've actually, from all the years that we have done this pageant, it has been a total of about $81,000 towards Dornbeckers. So that's just 12,000 more dollars to add to that. And actually, speaking of inclusion and all that kind of with our work session today, the winners for the pageant was actually the Unified Wolves, which that was amazing and all of their hard work definitely paid off. And it was a really great experience and it was very entertaining, so big win on that. And then next Wednesday, February 19th, we're hosting a blood drive with Red Cross. And then just a few days later, we have our Winter Formal, which is on the 22nd. The theme is Secrets of the Sea. And then this Wednesday, so in a couple of days, we're also having our Bob Ross Night after school from 4:00 to 5:00, which I believe I've talked about this event before, but it's essentially where we'll have like a Bob Ross like tutorial video up on like the screen. And then all the attendees get to try and recreate a Bob Ross painting or painting of their own. And then we're also having our Valограмm Sales at Twolton High School with our choir, where basically it's $5 to get like a song singed to somebody of your choosing. And it's also an additional $2 if you want to give them a rose. So it's definitely very fun and it's always an entertaining experience for sure in the classes. So for Tiger, finals are officially over, so every new student has a chance to restart. I know I needed one, like fresh new start, nothing too much. But the last day to change our schedules are the 13th for A Days and the 14th for B Days. And then moving on to sports, on Tuesday, we have a doubleheader, girls and boys basketball at Oregon City. It's from 5:45 to 7:15. The times vary. And then this Thursday, we have our Unified Basketball Game versus Sherwood at 4:15. Friday, Swimming has districts at Chamberham Aquatic Center. And then cheer has their OSAA State at Oregon City. And then for Leadership, we just had our Winter Formal. Wasn't our most successful event, but a lot of people have said that it was pretty good. So that's it for Tiger. And then, sorry, I just had one more thing to add for Twolton that I didn't have on my doc, but I wrote it on a piece of paper. Our esports team placed first place gold for GeoGesser, which is the first esports win in our district for the year. So yay, congrats to them. Very exciting.
All right, so a few weeks ago, at my Asian Student Union, we helped celebrate the New Year, in which we were passing out red envelopes on the Wednesday. It was a huge success. We were able to get all like 400 red envelopes away. They have little Jolly Ranchers in them and like these little fortune cookie teller notes in them. Super, super cute. Some of them were ominous though, so watch out for that. But what I am so, so excited about, I've been planning this for over a month. This Saturday, we're going to the Lanzu Chinese Garden. It's gonna be super exciting. There should be lion dancing. There should be many performances. And this is the second time we're going to the Lanzu Chinese Garden, so I'm so, so, so excited for it. It was so much work to plan, but it's finally, the fruits of my labor are happening. So I'm most proud about that. But also, around a few weeks ago, I'm part of a program called Intercombio, which is a mentorship for struggling eighth grade students. And we had our first field trip with our mentees, two big owls. It was so much fun. I didn't do the best at bowling, but that's okay. I beat my mentee in air hockey, so I am proud about that. Also something coming up, theater for our show at Tiger High School. We're doing She Loves Me. Very exciting story, I may add. So essentially, two lovers who hate each other in real life send each other secret love letters, but they don't know that it's actually them. So super cute, super cute love story. Currently setting up and making up the stage. It's gonna look super pretty. So excited to see all of you there. And with that, here are the dates. Put this on the calendar, please. March 6th to 7th and 13th through 14th, it's open at 7:00 PM. And over on the weekends, on March 8th and 15th, it's open at 2:00 PM. So make sure to come. We would love to see you there. I would love to see you there, so please come. But that's about it for me.
I kind of have some more boring news from Tiger, but next week is our Unity Week, which is a week that historically is a need at Tiger High School, which is composed of different activities and assemblies to bring together the student body. So next week on Wednesday, we have our Voices Assembly between the times of 12:00 to 2:34. There will be three different sessions with stories ranging from cultural identity, mental health, abuse, athletic experiences, immigration, loss and grief, and so on and so forth. And then that Friday, we will also have a community assembly where our affinity groups will be doing performances and activities. Like for example, ASU will be doing the spicy ramen challenge. And then also this upcoming Wednesday, we have our student community roundtable.
Wow, it's gonna be tough following that. I have two small announcements for Tiger Twolton Virtual Academy, but less is more. So we have, we had over 30 students transferred to TTVA this second semester and are excited to see how they like the program. We'll see how it goes for them this second semester. We have started a student spotlight that helps our student community get to know each other through the newsletter. So anything that you might not know about our student classmates, we'll find out in the newsletter. That'll be it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, students. All right, and with that, we will move to Superintendent Communications.
Thank you very much. So as we know, February is Black History Month, so Happy Black History Month. That BSU presentation was just inspiring. So for me, Black History Month is both a time of learning and a time of celebration of the resilience, the achievement, and the contributions of those who came before us. And as an African-American who grew up here in Oregon, it's been, I've been really reflective in terms of seeing all the advancements that I've seen in my lifetime. And I really cherish this opportunity to reflect and honor and continue the work of those who came before us to build towards a vision and a country where our seat at the table isn't just an exception, but it's a standard. And I know that many of our schools, as mentioned today, are finding their unique ways to celebrate, and that makes me really honored to be part of this district. So again, Happy Black History Month. I want to provide a bond update. You know, Alex, or Dirk or Polaski, excuse me, is going to give us a more in-depth bond update, but we're doing a lot of work related to the bond. There's a lot happening. We're having conversations in the community with PSOs. We're doing some polling, making sure that the numbers are starting to look pretty good for us. And so there's a lot of work to be done with the bond, but a lot of work is continuing to be done to get us there in May. And so more to come on that later on tonight. Also, budget reductions. I do, I did make a commitment to be transparent and consistent in our communication related to budget. So let me start with the good news, right? So first, this week, we'll convene our community budget workshops. And this is a great opportunity for the community to learn about the budget process, to provide input. We'll be focusing on Budgeting 101, which will help our community better understand the decisions ahead. And it's important for us, it's important for everyone to be able to also remember that we still have some significant budget reductions that we're looking at in the future. At the outset of the school year, we talked about having a $5 million budget reduction. After we've settled our CBA, our Collective Bargaining Agreement, and we've shored up our finances internally, we're now looking at a number of $5.9 million that we need to resolve. And I'm confident we can resolve this deficit. But what it's gonna take is us looking at our staffing, and there's gonna have to be some form of consolidation of staffing to the tune of 60 to 65 positions. When we first hear that, I know it sounds alarming. 65 positions doesn't necessarily mean that 65 people in our district are gonna be out of a job. But what it does mean is a rift is imminent, which means that we're gonna have 65 less FTE serving students. And that's different than 65 people that are working for us. To clarify, a rift is a little bit different than a layoff. So what it might mean is we're shifting around our service model. And we're gonna do everything we can to accomplish these reductions through attrition. That means retirements, vacancy savings. Right now, we have a lot of vacant positions, so shoring those up. And then people just move on from their roles. And once we kind of determine what our service model is after going through a series of strategic processes within our district, we'll have a better sense of what our reduction in force looks like. And our commitment is to communicate to the community how much we're going to have to reduce and to take input from the community, input from our staff and administrators, so that we know we're making the most informed decisions when it comes to budget reductions. So one question you might have is, how is this different from last year? Well, there's a couple of things that are gonna be different. One, we're looking at systemic changes so that we don't have to come back to this conversation every year. One of the reasons that we're in this position is because we had a lot of money through SRFunds, a groundswell of money, and that has since dried up, like every other school district in the state. We used a lot of that funding to hire, so we hired hundreds of new positions during that time. And those are positions that we needed. But now we need to look at a time where we scale back. And so again, we want to be intentional in doing that. One way that it's gonna be different from next year besides the system is we can't continue to dip into our reserves. We need to actually start building our reserves back up. So when we make these reductions, we'll do so by doing a little bit of sacrificing. We're not going into our reserves again, and it means that we need to start spending within our means. So when we do make some reductions, we have to resist the temptation to add back. We have to find other ways to serve our students rather than going in the hole. So again, our commitment is to, one, center these decisions, and center students in these decisions, hold true to our values on these decisions, and also protect the classroom. Those are all really important values for us. And finally, to make sure that we're being very transparent in our communication. So I might sound repetitive, but I don't want anyone to be caught off guard. So we'll keep coming back to this every month if we need to. All right, and then the last thing that I want to do is talk about inclusion. This is gonna be a continuation of my conversation from the last time, the last comments I made on inclusion. So, and I did write down some comments, and I want to make sure I captured the right words, so I will go off of the words that I wrote. So in my last two board messages, I spoke candidly about our district's unwavering support of our immigrant students in response to federal mandates that create a concern and uncertainty in our community. And at our last meeting, I emphasized the importance of taking care of all children. And when I said all children, I meant all. And at that time, I intentionally chose not to specify particular groups. My goal was to underscore a collective unity among our students while also avoiding placing undue scrutiny on any group for the sake of me making a public statement. However, since then, I've witnessed persistent and unfair scrutiny directed at specific populations that many of our students and staff belong to. If there's gonna be a target placed on members of our school community, then it's the responsibility of district leadership to take a stand. This is a bigger issue than one of immigration status. The noise, the hatred, the attacks we're seeing are being directed at individuals not just for where they're from, but for who they are and how they identify themselves. So let's be clear. Tiger Tuolton School District is a safe and accepting place for all students and staff. This includes our LGBTQ plus students and staff, our transgender and gender fluid students and staff, and every individual who deserves to be seen, valued, and supported. No one in our schools should feel the need to shrink themselves, to hide who they are, or to exist in fear. In TTSD, students and staff are encouraged to show up as their authentic selves unapologetically. Your presence, your voices, and your identities enrich our district, shaping a culture that is more compassionate, more inclusive, and more reflective of a world we want to build. As we affirm our district's values, I leave you with these words from MLK. "In the end, we will remember not the words of our enemies, but the silence of our friends." So let us not be silent. Let us stand firm in our commitment to equity, dignity, and belonging for every member of our TTSD family. Again, all means all, no matter where you come from, how you identify, your race or ethnicity, or what challenges you face. TTSD is here to ensure you feel welcome and safe, and that is what we're about, and we're not going to change. And that's it for my comments.
Thank you so much. Those are very important words. Board members' communication. Anyone wanna follow that? Director Weston.
All right. Well, our superintendent really just said it all. But I do want to just also say, I really appreciate the thoughtful work on the budget, the communication. And I look forward to the day that we have a fully funded education system in Oregon and are not forced to make these difficult choices. But I appreciate the thoughtfulness that's being shown here, so thank you. And I also want to say, it's really good to see our district leaders, educators, families, students continuing to uplift and support one another. Sometimes staying the course and showing up makes all the difference. Thank you. Happy New Year. Happy Black History Month. Let's all keep doing what we're doing.
Thank you. Director Sersky?
I've got a lot of stuff, so I'll start with the more... The more complicated stuff. So I sit on OSBA's Legislative Policy Committee. And during the legislative session, we have weekly updates. And now that the session is in full lore, they are coming fast and furious. And so I wanted to give you all an update on some of the bills and where things are going in the legislature right now. So there are a number of bills regarding the cap on special ed funding, high-cost disability funding. There will be a presentation given by ODE on special education on Wednesday, February twelfth. So if you have time, you can watch it on the legislature's website, or it will be recorded. You can watch it later, but that should be a very informative presentation, especially coming on the back of our... Wow, I just lost a word. Our work session earlier today. There was a hearing today on House Bill thirty-one thirty. That's the bill that would make it so that board members who don't receive a stipend for their volunteer work on the board, if you don't receive a stipend, you don't have to file the economic interest statement, which would be such a nice little thing to not have to file something when we don't get any money for it. Overall funding, Representative Ruiz let us know that he is hoping for an optimistic revenue forecast, but it's not likely to be as good as it's been in the past. And that's in part due to the new way in which the projections are being done. And so co-chairs have been told to expect some cuts. The final budget, of course, is dependent upon the May forecast. The Governor's Accountability Committee has been making significant progress. It's shown interest in highlighting what districts are doing well. And so I think there's an opportunity there for us to chime in and show Salem what we're doing well. There's a lot of interest in eliminating paperwork and unfunded mandates, which I'm, you know, we're all for. They're looking at the procurement process, which is to say grants that have to be reapplied for every year, and making sure that they've eliminated the gaps between when the grants end and when the start of the school year is and when the start of the grant is, so that there's not this gap of, well, you'll get the funding in six months, but go ahead and start the program now, but maybe you won't get the money. But the most, I think, important thing that's coming out of that Accountability Committee is the idea that they are open to using formative assessments as part of the accountability, not just summative assessments. And so that is, I think, a real point where we could maybe, again, show the good stuff that we're doing in Salem. One of the problems with it is gonna be, how do you get a formative assessment that is normed across all of the districts in the state? There is also Senate Bill eight forty-nine. This comes from the school district's Unfunded Liability Fund, which was active from twenty seventeen to twenty-three. It's no longer active. It's no longer receiving funds in, but there is a leftover amount of eighty-seven million dollars. And so this bill would figure out, how is that money going to be allotted to districts? Is it going to be per district? How do districts that have side accounts get figured into it? Is it per student? There's a lot of stuff still to be decided throughout this committee, but the devil is always in the details. But there's some really promising stuff coming down the pipe. In more closer to home, last week, I attended a really great basketball game. It was the Unified Basketball, Tiger versus Tuolton. Tiger won. It was still a great game. I have never seen two teams play so hard and have so much fun on the basketball court. And next, this Wednesday, excuse me, February twelfth, will be Tuolton Unified Basketball's Senior Night, which stands to be a really wonderful game. So if any of you can make it, it's right after one of our community budget meetings, so it might be a little tight. But I would encourage everybody who can go to go. And that should do it.
Director Miles?
Thank you. Tonight in our work session, we had a discussion on TTSD's inclusive model of special education, for those of you that weren't there. I am really proud and grateful to be part of a district that believes in creating a welcoming and adaptive space for all students and that considers special ed a service, not a program, which is something that is versus something that is done, which was talked about tonight. There is a piece of research that shows that the single belief shared by all board members that all students can learn, I've probably said this before, measurably impacts student outcomes. Just learn, not achieve on a standardized test. Just learn. And I saw this belief represented in this presentation tonight, or our discussion about special ed. And I know this is the belief of everyone in our district. And as such, thinking about our students and this belief, I am and I remain deeply concerned about the cuts to federal funding that impact our schools and our students, particularly some of those students with the highest needs or based on identity. Threats to IDEA, to Medicaid, to Title Funds, restriction of those funds will hurt students everywhere. I appreciate the work of our legislators, our state and local advocates, our staff, our family and community members everywhere, our board members who are heavily involved in this work, who are keeping up with the news and advocating for the best interests of all of our students and their needs. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I will just close. I just wanted to add on to our superintendent's words. Of course, I think we all sort of plus one all of what was said. And I just wanted to also kind of anchor this to our policy for our school district as well. And two specific ones. We have our Educational Equity and Racial Justice Policy. And the very first part of that is that we are committed to academic and personal success for each student. This commitment is anchored in the belief that every student has the right to equitable educational opportunities and a school experience that is validating, empowering, and just. And of course, it goes on. And then every student belongs, which is all students and employees are entitled to high-quality educational experience or work environment, free from discrimination or harassment based on perceived race, color, religion, gender identity, sexual orientation, disability, or national origin. And so I really just wanted to kind of close that loop. And all of these things that we so strongly champion and advocate for and believe, we have also put into our school district policies, and I just wanted to call those out. With that kind of tying on to what Director Miles said, I was in DC last week advocating on the Hill for education. And it was a very interesting time to be advocating for education, as the day before we went, it was when the bill was dropped to dissolve the Department of Education. And so during that time, it was for the National School Boards Association. And I was part of an Oregon delegation that we went and spoke to our senators and our representatives on the Hill. And we talked about exactly that, the, I mean, the absolutely sort of earth-shattering to a district impacts that taking away our federal funds specifically for Title, IDEA, and Medicaid. And one of the things that I helped, I was talking with Representative Salinas. And one thing that I was telling her was that while we have, we have to take care of, it's a law for our special education students, we have to provide services for those students. We provide a lot of amazing programs and services that are not required by law. And so what that will do is hamstring all of these districts if that money goes away for IDEA, which is our special education funding. We will then have to pull from CTE, from the arts, from all of these other things that are incredibly important and rightfully should be probably part of law for all students to have access to as well, but currently aren't, to put into the bucket of the things that we have to provide by law. And she said that was an argument she would take to her counterparts across the aisle, because that was something that everybody could understand. We have to provide these things, and we are lucky, and we have made a commitment to provide these other things, but we won't be able to do both at a certain point. And we also have school districts that would go bankrupt within a year if that money disappeared. So we have districts to the south of us that are a hundred percent title schools. And so while we would cobble things together and it would be a make-it-work moment for maybe districts like ours, it would be crippling to smaller districts and what they could provide for their students. And additionally, there was a lot of wonderful conversation amongst board members and superintendents and other folks that were there around environmental justice, executive orders that will severely impact public education beyond just dissolving the Department of Education, the IB partnerships, assessments, the importance of civic engagement. And then there was one on family engagement. And it's fun to go to those, and I'm looking at Zinnia over here, because we do such a good job at that already. It's really lovely to go to some of these sessions and see how well we have done building within our communities and looking to our communities to see how can we engage with you in a really authentic and meaningful way? And how can we bring each other in to that relationship? So it's fun to sit at those and see how far past some of the mark we are than some other districts that are just learning how to do this work. So I really appreciate all the work that you have done, Dr. N, on that. And I think that's all I will say for now. So thank you, everyone. And with that, I just want to confirm, Jade, there's no public comments? Oh, wait, there's birthdays. I have it right here. Director Bernard, January twenty-eighth, yes. Director C, February twentieth. And me, which is on the thirteenth, but it seems we're announcing my own birthday, so there we go. So while I pass those out, I will have Director N come up, and we will have our first reports and discussion item. And I believe Jacob DeGraw, yep, Chair DeGraw.
Alrighty. Good evening, everyone. I am really just here to introduce our Chair of the Educational Equity Advisory Committee, Chair DeGraw. And he'll be presenting tonight about an update for the EAC.
Thank you, Dr. N. Good evening, Chair Irvin and Vice Chair Jaimez and members of the board and Superintendent Dr. Urasanata. It's nice to be here tonight. Thank you for allowing me the time to provide an update on the work that the committee has done so far, as well as a couple of improvements that we've made this year and some of the work that we have left to do. So with that, we can go to the next slide. So some of the work that we've achieved so far, we've had four meetings, and we have five left to go. five left to go, so we're almost at that halfway mark. That is one less, one fewer, one less meeting than last year, and I think that nine mark is, it kind of hits the spot. I think anything less, it would be really difficult to get all of our work done, and having more than that is a bit too much for, for most, most people to commit to. We brought in three new committee members this year. One of them is a student. And between people that had to drop for various reasons and whatnot, we are now sitting at about 13 members, and we usually have about eight to 10 that show up to our meetings, which I still think that is a, a good number to have, eight to 10. As we had developed last year, we start off each year doing an orientation and training, where we, this helps give all members to make sure that we're all on the same page by giving a history, a background of the committee, reviewing the work we did the prior year, as well as the recommendations that we made in the annual report from the prior year, so that that's something that we can try and focus on when we do our work. In Nov-, in November, Dr. Udo came and presented to, to us to talk about his experience at Salem Kaiser School District when he was Assistant Superintendent there, and served as the liaison to their Educational Equity Advisory Committee. So it was, it was really great to have you, Doctor, to, you know, hear about that experience, because before most of us, all we know is, is here, so it was great to hear that experience. In the second half of the meeting, we did our annual see-do-learn exercise, so what do you want to see, do, and learn in the upcoming year? And as you'll see later on, we had a couple takeaways from that that we'll follow up on later, later this year. In our December meeting, we did a full-year review of bias incident and hate speech data from the prior school year. So this served as not just, not only a training for some of those new members on like our ABC protocol, but also to help level set, like, this is a full data set, so that when we do start to review quarterly data this year, you have something to compare it to. EAC members have also been sitting in, or the SIP roundtables are now over, but EAC members were sitting in on some of those SIP roundtables, which gives us a, a little bit more insight into what goes on in the SIPs, as well as the ESH plans at times that they touch on it, because we will be conducting reviews of SIP and ESH plans in our committee, but being able to sit in on those roundtable discussions helps provide further insight. And then in our meeting last week, we had an open discussion where we gathered questions proactively for the Cabinet Roundtable that will occur in April. So we want to be able to provide those questions and whatnot, so that the Cabinet has time to review and come up with their, their responses. And during that session, we also reviewed the Cabinet Roundtable section from the annual report, so we could familiarize ourselves with, well, what did we recommend last year? Because we want to, you know, follow up on that, as well as, again, just reminding people what it was that we looked at last year, so that could, you know, get the juices flowing as far as what other further questions they might have. All right, next slide. So first half improvements. Some of these are in process, but I think for me, like, one of the highlights or probably the, my favorite thing to talk about right now is the fact that we have a new Vice Chair. Henry can't be here tonight, but we do have a new Vice Chair in Henry Castillo. Some of you may know him, and I want to make sure I get this right, and just want to briefly introduce him for those of you that don't know. So Henry Castillo is an alumni of the school district, and he is currently going to college to get a degree in teaching with the hopes of coming back to the school district to teach someday. He started off at the beginning with the ESH Committee, so before it was the EAC, it was the ESH Committee, and he was on that as a student, and he's been present ever since. He also is our representative from the EAC that serves on the Budget Committee. So he's been a presence ever since the beginning. I've really enjoyed to get to know him, I'm excited to see how he will grow, and I'm, I'm glad that he stepped up to this Vice Chair role, and I, I can't wait to see what the future holds for him, and hopefully coming back to the school district as a teacher. One other change that we made to our meetings that we implemented in this last week meeting is doing a roundtable session at the beginning of meetings, similar to like the Board Report out that, that you guys do. And this serves as a, this now is going to serve as one of the functions of our committee, one of the requirements of report, where members of the committee can report out on, you know, what they're seeing, hearing, and their experiences in the school district. And that is a requirement of District Equity Committee, is to report to the Board and the school district as far as what's going on in the district, and that gives us that opportunity. Something else that I recently sent out was the, the, where did I have it in my notes? The, how to address bias incidents and hate speech in our school, the training, the same training that all staff and teachers have been given this year. And this serves not only as a good education point for members of the committee, but also gives them insight and, and direction as far as what is the school district doing to address bias incidents and hate speech, and what type of training are members in the district getting, and how are incidents supposed to be reported? So it's great that it serves two purposes, again, to give us that training, but also providing insight as far as what is the district doing. And then lastly, our Vice Chair, again, Henry, he, he mentioned, and I believe it was the December meeting, hey, it would be really good to have an FAQ document, because something that we found out over the years, especially when, like, for example, when we were reviewing the bias incident and hate speech data, every year, somebody asks, you know, well, what is a minor incident and what's a major incident? Right? So, you know, we want to create an FAQ document to answer those types of questions for committee members that they can reference while they are, you know, looking at all of the data. Depending on how it comes out, Henry will be working with Dr. Un on this document, and it could potentially end up being in a, in, in the appendix of the annual report at the end of the year, but we'll see how far we get on it. All right, and the next slide. So what do we have left to do? We do have quite a bit left to do, so again, we have five meetings left. I would say, the, the first several meetings are, you know, getting up to speed, and, you know, okay, what, what are we going to do this year? I would say we're about the same position as last year, we're, okay, last five meetings, this is where we need to get all of our work done. I mentioned in the see-do-learn exercise, you know, that's our opportunity to like, well, what are people interested in learning about? There were multiple comments about people being interested in the foundation for Tigerd Tuolotin Schools. And while I know they operate outside of the school district, and we don't plan on putting anything in annual report on this, the foundation does help contribute to a more equitable educational outcomes in our schools. And so I did find it appropriate to have, reach out and have a representative come present to our committee as far as what work they do and how they contribute to our schools. I believe the plan is to have a representative show up at our next meeting on March 3rd, and I'm still working on that. Something else that we plan on doing then, throughout the rest of the meetings this year, and we're going to chunk it out like we did last year, is completing review of school SIP and ESH plans, as well as reviewing bias incident and hate speech data. So we'll try and select six to eight schools for the next few meetings, and then also try and fit in some bias incident and hate speech data review during the upcoming meetings. And in April, that's when we will have our Cabinet Roundtable session, like I mentioned before, where we'll have representatives from Cabinet to talk about progress they've made towards culture and climate academics, as well as any HR initiatives, and talk about any progress they've made on their strategic plans. We also would like to have Community Relations and Communications show up as well to talk about work that they are doing and how they are reaching out to the community, and give us an opportunity to ask questions. And then School Resource Officers, as, you know, again, we serve oversight of that program, we usually have two check-ins a year with the SROs, but due to conflicting, they couldn't show up at our prior meeting, so we're only going to have one meeting within this year in May, so it'll be an end-of-year report with the School Resource Officers. Something else that was brought up in that see-do-learn exercise that we are hoping to address in that same presentation, is there were questions just about how is security taught in our schools, and how is, how are our staff and teachers trained to teach security in our schools? Right? So how are, how are kids learning about, you know, lockout roles and that type of stuff? So hoping to learn more about that at that session. And then subcommittees, we have the Annual Report Subcommittee, which I lead, where, you know, I get help in putting together the annual report. We're still working on putting together a Communications Subcommittee, so we can work on the website, and we also still have the Policy Subcommittee that is going on as well. And before I move on to the end of talking about the annual report, I would also like to plug with the Policy Subcommittee, we would like to know from the Board if there are any policies that you would like us to review. I believe, we, we asked that last year, and just to make sure that, you know, there are a bunch of them out there, so if there are any for, that you would like us to review, please let myself and/or Zinnia know, and then, you know, we can look at reviewing those policies. And then, yeah, all this will culminate with another annual report that I plan on delivering to the School Board on Ju-, on June 23rd.
Thank you so much. That was a great update and sort of lay of the land of, of what's going on. Are there comments, questions from folks? I have a couple.
I just think that, one, thank you for the work that you're doing with the EAC. It's a great example of community engagement intersecting with policy and accountability and how we do things in schools, so we're just so thankful for the work that you do. We know you put in a lot of time with it, so we appreciate you.
Thank you, and it's a great learning experience for me. I've become very passionate about education over the years, and I appreciated Jill's talk about the, all the stuff going on at the Capitol, because that's stuff that I've started to follow now as well. So it's, it's great to do this, because, like I said, it's a great learning opportunity.
Thank you.
And I would just like to ask, can we get a copy of your slides from tonight? Because I, we didn't get those ahead of time, and it would just be nice to have that as all of the things that you're working on.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's a lot of work, and I'll echo the superintendent's comments, thank you for all of the work you're putting in, because that's a lot of stuff.
Yeah, absolutely. I try to keep the bullet points high level, and then I'll just talk to it, because if I try to put everything in three slides, it would be a lot of small text.
I will just say, again, thank you, it is a lot of work, and I love hearing that Henry is still part of this community in a way, and a grow-your-own example, and I hope that he comes back, we'd be so lucky to have him, and I love the possible sort of, at least partnership or communication with FTS, I think that's really just like a great connection to have. And I was going to ask on any emerging themes that you're seeing from, I think, that first data that you've seen, but I will wait for the annual report in the spring, but I, but it is interesting, I think, particularly when we, after implementing the acts of aggression policy, I know that we really wanted to make sure there weren't unintended impacts, negative impacts on any of our student communities, and so if that was something that you were seeing in that data coming through, that would be an interesting thing for us to, to take a look at in the spring, so.
Right, that's a, that's a very good call, because that is a new data point that last year, we weren't actively reviewing, and we do have that information retroactively, so when we did review the full year's data, the access to an aggression data was there, and that's something that we do plan on reviewing and will provide feedback on.
Awesome, thank you so much. Anything else? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, and now we'll move to the first read of the Open Enrollment Inter-District Transfer Process with Lisa Burton and Emma Gomez.
All right, thank you again for having us this evening. So joining me this evening is Emma Gomez, and she is our new transfer coordinator, also new joining the, the Community Relations Team this year. So each year, we ask for the Board's guidance in deciding the number of transfers coming in and out of the district and inter-district transfer process, and so we'll walk through, next slide, please, sorry. We'll walk through what that looks like now for in-district and inter-district transfers, and then make a recommendation.
Excuse me, Lisa, can you speak up a little bit or speak into the mic?
Sorry about that.
I'm having trouble.
Yeah, so tonight we'll receive our current transfer process for this school year. In the Board Packet, you can also review documents and data on our transfers to virtual charter schools, and we'll review some options for next year's transfer processes and provide an opportunity for discussion. Next slide. So Emma will walk through the current process for in-district transfers, and then I'll walk you through the inter-district transfers. Next slide, please. So a quick review. For the in-district transfer process from one TTSD school to another, families submit an application, the application will either get approved or denied depending on the principal's recommendation. If the transfer is approved, that transfer is then valid until the highest grade, fifth grade, eighth grade, or 12th. Families can then submit an in-district application to choose to stay within that feeder pattern when transitioning to sixth and ninth grade. Next slide, please. These are our current in-district transfers, including those continuing from elementary and/or middle school transfers. You can see the numbers for all of the levels, there is a report in your packet with each school's numbers broken down into more detail. Next slide, please. With the increase in the numbers of families wanting an online option for students, we added additional information to the transfer's webpage to provide information for the virtual academy. This slide includes some of the details provided to families when they submit a request to be released to a virtual school. Before moving forward, is there any questions about in-district transfers? Next slide, please. Okay, so in 2024, for our inter-district transfers, families that wanted to be released from TTSD could submit an application from April 1st to June 1st to be a part of a lottery process. We had 20 slots that the Board approved last year to release students to other school districts. Once the 20 spots were filled, we release based on hardship criteria only. Families from other school districts could apply to attend TTSD schools starting April 3rd as well, and where they would have their applications pending until their home district could provide us with an approved release. Next slide, please. So here are our current numbers for inter-district transfers. The inter-district report in your Board Packet also breaks down these numbers by school and grade levels for incoming and outgoing students. Next slide. Additionally, ODE provides a monthly charter school enrollment report. Number of, total number of students is what we use to calculate how close we are to a 3% capacity, and we have the ability to then deny any additional releases to charter virtual schools. At the end of January, we're at, currently at 2.6% of that 3%. Next slide.
Excuse me, I have a quick question. Go ahead.
That 2.6%, that includes all of Mitch and roughly him?
No?
No, I don't believe so.
This is just the, just the virtual?
It's just virtual.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's all that's included in that ODE option. Any questions about the current inter-district process before we move on? Okay, so we'll move on to our recommendation. Before we do that, the considerations that we would ask that you keep in mind is, of course, that we have an equitable process for our transfers, and that, keeping in mind also the impact on school programs and current enrollment. And I'll share a little bit in the next slide, Emma put together what some other school districts are doing around us. There are some that have moved to hardship only in the last few years, and then others that are, also have a lottery process, one of those being lottery process with a deadline, and then after that, hardship only, I think, and then Westland has a 20-slot lottery, the same as us, but these are just some current, you know, school, just what other districts are doing around us. Next slide. We met with school principals before preparing for this presentation to get their feedback on our current process, and one question they asked us is why we haven't moved to hardship only? And so we sent out a survey, because not everyone attended that meeting, and of 18 principals that responded, 75% are in agreement with moving to hardship only, so we wanted just you to consider this. There were a few principals that are, don't really understand, you know, the reasons why, other than we use hardship criteria after the 20 slots, so. So we need to probably have some more discussions with a few principals, but most of them were in favor of moving to a hardship only. Any questions about that? Okay, next slide, please. So based on current enrollment numbers and the interdistrict release option of surrounding districts, we are recommending to move to hardship or for you to consider hardship only for releases. We would still be open enrollment for incoming students from other school districts. We would hope to open our window a little bit earlier as other districts are already open and some of them close. And so having our window end in June for that lottery is challenging for families because they need to know actually before that date. And so then other options to consider is we can consider as we can continue with the 20 lottery spots. Hardship release after lottery and unlimited incoming. We could also identify number of incoming students with hardship only releases. Sorry, I read that wrong. Identified number of incomings with hardship releases. ODE does state that our board can designate a number of incoming accepted zero positions to release and review of hardships only. We could consider unlimited number with a deadline. Canby School District does that. And then unlimited spots available incoming and outgoing year round, similar to likely because we go. And we'll move to the next slide and open for discussion. One thing I will say is we will continue to monitor monthly enrollment reports and keep in mind that schools near capacity, you know, encouraging families, if possible, to transfer a different school if there's a reason why that they don't want to be at their current school. Some of the main reasons we get for requests for transfers is proximity to another school. We have families that live very close to Beaverton Schools and Lake Oswego. They feel that Lake Oswego is close by. Athletic reasons is a big reason that we get people requests. Families wanting a particular online charter school, very popular last year. And then maybe, you know, situations in their current school. So any questions?
I think we're all processing. I would be curious, I'll start briefly and then others can, of course, chime in. I would be curious about more information. I was surprised to see that 75% of principals would go to hardship only. And so and I know you said you were going to ask more questions and I would just be interested in the why of that. I'm trying to like put myself in all of their shoes and maybe what they're seeing besides just the the numbers piece of it. I would just be interested to have a little bit more information around why such a large number of them would go to that. I just am curious. So that would be one thing if we could get more information on that, that would be helpful.
I was going to suggest that might be something we could have a maybe not an entire work session, but at least a a report with a little bit more information to fill in some of those those questions. One of the things that I'm noticing, the trend as districts across the state are losing students, everybody is tightening down the number of students that they'll release. They'll accept 170, but they'll, you know, they'll only release hardship. And I totally understand the logic for that. Money is tight for everybody, but I'm also left wondering what's the right thing for families, right? Because it's not just the what you might consider a less than concrete example of why. It's it's not just that it's closer to my house, it's that that's the community that my kid is in. That's important, right, to the the health and welfare of a child in school. So there's got to be a balance. And so I I'm loathe to go to a hardship only, but I'd like to hear how how those hard, what constitutes hardship and if it would extend to a situation like a student who is nearby to a school or something like that.
Yeah, and that's tough because our hardship criteria is really specific. So it doesn't, you know, leave a lot of room for special circumstances, I guess I would say. But I think I know the principals that did speak about it in our meeting see kids, you know, leaving for athletic reasons or just wanting a different school community and I guess wanting to see if they can keep those students within the district and provide what they need. But we definitely can ask some more questions. Yeah.
I do appreciate that and that like this is not a transfer portal, right, for the athletic piece. And so that makes sense. So to Director Zereshin's point, my first thought is like, I don't want to cut it off to just hardships, but I also recognize reasons like that that make it tricky. So like where that balance lies, I'm not sure. Director Miles, I'm sorry.
Is there a so I'm, you know, looking at what other districts are doing as far as hardships. Is there a standardized definition of hardship? You said that ours is, okay. So everybody's using the same definition of what hardship means. Is that baked into law?
Yes. Yeah, if you go to our website, there's the definition and the policy around that from ODE. And so it's really the the easiest way to or best way to follow and be consistent with reasons to allow families to to transfer.
And one more question. And for in district transfers, I noticed that you can stay at your school until the highest level of that, until five, eight, or whatever. And then you have to reapply to stay in that in that feeder pattern. Are most students likely to be approved to stay in that feeder pattern or how does?
I think it really is based on capacity. So for example, if you have a student who feeds into Tuality, but because Tuality is so full now, it's very likely that they will they will have to then continue with their their resident feeder pattern.
Okay.
It just depends, you know, Fowler and Hazelbrook have more capacity.
Okay, thanks.
And one one thing I want, sorry, one thing I want to share just for context is outside, south of the or really outside Portland metro area, you'll see this is a fairly consistent practice with a lot of districts. And there's, of course, hardship is is one of the one of the ways that we do look to release kids. But for us, we are seeing a lot of people trying to school shop for athletics or other really miscellaneous reasons. And so that's the reason that we're going towards this practice.
Yeah, and I will add that the other thing we're finding, because we do have to basically, sorry, it's not reject, but most principals will ask us to send a letter to families who they're having attendance issues because they've been given a transfer and then they're having attendance issues, even just having, you know, other issues where we cannot honor their transfer. And so I think that also is something that they're considering is that maybe especially students who are coming in from other districts. And so I think that they can, you know, when they think about when our students are going and then they're coming back because they're having the same issues with attendance or or other not following the rules of their new district. And so I think they're seeing, they see a lot of that, but we can we can learn more about that.
Any other thoughts? All right, well, thank you. And I think to Director Zereshin's point, I think kind of another, it'd just be interesting to get a little bit more information and kind of hear those those perspectives and then maybe feel more comfortable moving that direction. We'll see, but yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you for doing all that. Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, and then our final reports and discussion item is our bond communication update with Director Plosky.
Good evening, board members, board members. Thanks for the opportunity to give you an update on our efforts around the bond. We were here before you last month, talked about the message polling that we did and you heard from our consultant. In a few minutes, when I run through my part of the presentation, Jeremy Wright, who's with another consultant we're working with, is going to provide a brief overview of some of the messaging that we're doing based on that polling. As you know, working on a bond through May 20th is a huge lift as far as communications, but it's not just the communications department that works on that. So if you think of the old days when you go to the stadium and the and the wave would start would start over here and go around the entire stadium, think of us in communications starting that wave and then passing out to members of the community, to our teachers, to our parents, certainly board members, everyone within the Tiger dwelling community so that the public has a very clear understanding of the implications of the bond. This week, among the things I'm working on is presenting to a number of our PSOs. I don't want to thank Darren Bernard, who's here, and Darren and members of his team have been joining me on some of those. That's part of getting that word out, you know, with our parents. We're working on putting together printed materials. We're going to be filming a video tomorrow at Tuality and Fowler. And thank you to our stars of the video, Dr. Dosanatan and Tristan, I see her shaking her head, but thanks for your willingness to be part of that. We're also working on social media. We'll be doing some paid buys through social media later in the year, but it's it's moving and it's moving pretty quickly and it's going to keep getting more and more intense. So it's exciting. We want to make sure that that you're up to date on the things that we're working on. I want to run kind of quickly through the slide presentation that I'm giving to the PSOs. So if you could advance the slide for me, Thor. This just, you know, some of the immediate background. These these are within the slide deck, these are things that you already know. So keep going, Thor. I'm going to go a little quickly through this. The background, as you know, our long range facilities planning committee worked for a couple of years to determine the direction that we're going. Next slide, please. The proposed projects, again, as we're all aware, the the headlines are around Fowler and the four elementaries, Bridgeport, Byram, Durham, and Mary Woodward. We also have big projects in mind for the auditoriums at Twelton and Tiger High Schools and some upgrades there. Curriculum and technology, which are across the district. A lot of facility needs across the district, including turf, for example. Infrastructure, pipes, HVAC, district wide, this is going to touch virtually all of our schools. Next slide, please. Keep going. And this is, I'm starting to get a little bit into stealing Jeremy's thunder here, but we're going to keep hammering away on these keywords of repair, secure, prepare. I will provide to you individually as board members, talking points around these within the next week or a week and a half so that you have an entire packet as you you're in the community so that you know exactly the the keywords that we're talking about. Keep going, Thor. Again, repair, and I'll I'll let Jeremy talk more about that. Next slide, please. Secure, and one more time, Thor. Prepare, thanks. And and just advancing through the last couple of slides, these are things that you already know. Based on $429.3 million, we estimate that the additional cost for the taxpayer would be 99 cents per $1,000 of assessed value, just about $25 a month for a median home within the district. Next slide, please, Thor. Keep going. And when we're talking with PSOs, one of the things we we ask them is, you know, how do you want to help? And there are lots of opportunities for parents to pitch in. Been really pleased to see the enthusiasm that I've seen just this week from parents. They have a lot of questions, but a lot of willingness, as we know, our community is very invested in our school. So that's an exciting part of doing this work. Next slide, please. One more, one more, and this is the last one. And this is just an example that I wanted to give you of the kind of social media posts we're doing. In terms of cadence, we're trying to have two, three, four posts a week now. As we get 30 to 45 days out from the election, we'll have posts every single day. Some of these photos are pretty static, but the one particularly the one on the left, which Gustavo, our staff took, he's taken some fantastic photos of our staff and our students that I really love seeing, the way he shows how the engagement between our staff and our students. And you're going to see these if you're in the social media space, as many of us are, you're going to see a lot of messaging around the bond. Jeremy, would you like to talk a little bit with us about messaging and keywords that I'm again, I'm sorry, I stole your thunder?
You did, yeah, you took it already there, but.
Let me just let me first come in, you know, for the last month and a half, we've been working really closely, two months, with the communications team and the leadership team over there at the district and just behind the scenes, working to prepare a lot of materials and a lot of things that are going to be rolling out here in the next couple of weeks and as we get into the meat of the bond campaign. So keep your eye out for those and certainly hopefully you use them as well. Just a just a note on where that prepare, secure messaging comes from. You know, we know from your polling that there are a few key things. And I know you talked a little bit about polling last month, but a few key things. Your brothers are interested in making sure your students and staff are warm, safe, and dry or cool. They know that they really care about the security of your students and staff and anyone who's in your buildings. And they want your kids to be and students to be prepared for the world wherever they go. They like the idea of making sure that your schools are up to date with modern learning and in spaces for learning. And so that's where we, when we think about messaging and communications and bond and what's the best practices, you know, people have a very short attention span and it's very hard to capture people in this day and age, right? And so we work, you know, we try to create some some basic, simple ideas that if someone walks away, what are the five things I need to know? What are the three key areas of the bond? So prepare, secure, you know, those those key messages, I think, are it is part of trying to distill a very long list of projects down to simple categories. So that is, you know, you know, Alex asked me to come to, so that is the basis of the messaging is trying to take, you know, your long list of projects, marry that with where your community is at and, you know, what we know from your polling and create, you know, compelling, interesting messaging that'll capture people's attention. And so you'll, based on the presentation, you know, Alex has showed you, we're going to have one page talking points, one page materials that you can use that, you know, walk through kind of the five basic questions. And the five things we want people to take away from any presentation you make as a board member or any presentation anyone in the community makes about the bond. Of course, all materials at this point are going to be mirrored, so you'll see the same repetition of messaging across various mediums, whether it's digital or static or collateral or print or video. All these things are going to be repeating the same the same key messages around the around your bond.
Thank you. So again, we're going to be sounding the same tune, but using a lot of different images so that there's a variety in that. We did file with the county, our first filing a week and a half ago. We expect to do the second filing on Thursday of this week and shortly after that, we'll have a measure number. So it's exciting work. Glad to be involved in it and we're going to continue to give you regular updates. And I will also, as I mentioned individually, give each of you talking points and printed materials so that you can share that information with others. I welcome your questions.
Any questions? This is great. Oh, very good, very good. All right. Awesome, very thorough. Thank you for it is a lot of work. So Jeremy, thank you. Director Plosky, thank you. Yeah, it's it's a lot and I'm excited that we're we're getting to the the social media print pictures, all that kind of phase of this, so that'll be great. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Looking forward.
All right, with that, we'll move to our first action item, which is Resolution 2425-07 with Director C.
Good afternoon, Board of Directors, or I guess it's evening, apologies, nice to have you. We have some guests joining us today, Dan Goldman and Maureen Wolf from the Northwest Regional ESD. And in your board packet, you received an overview of the proposed local service plan for 2025-26, which requires approval by member districts, and I'll pass the baton over to Dan.
All right. Well, thanks very much. It's good to see the board here. Good evening, Madam Chair.
Gosh, first of all, I'm Dan Goldman. I'm the Superintendent from Northwest Regional ESD. And before I pass the baton quickly over to Maureen Wolf, who you all know so well, I am stunned by the board meet, by the boardroom I'm looking at. I was thinking we were going to zoom into the good old Hibbard, you know, the Hibbard boardroom where I spent many, many a year as your curriculum director, but it looks really nice, so congratulations. We are going to, first of all, I just want to apologize that Maureen and me, we could not be there with you in person tonight. We happen to be presenting the local service plan across the region this evening. A lot of board, a lot of boards meet on Monday, on Mondays, and we have 20 school districts in the region. So we apologize if we're not there with you, but we just zoomed in from Rainier. And with that, I will pass the baton here to Maureen, kick us off.
Thank you, Dan. And Dan, I'll do a real quick check on the slides. Are you, perfect, perfect. Good evening, everyone. I love it. School transfers, district transfers, school bonds, facilities. I just feel like it was all teed up for, for me to sit and listen. So as Dan said, good evening, Chair Irvin, board members, Dr. Udo Sanata. My name is Maureen Wolf, and I'm the Vice Chair of the Northwest ESD. I'm one of nine members on the board and just really honored truly to be here tonight with Superintendent Goldman to present the 2526 Local Service Plan for your approval. So our service area, I think most of you know, we serve 20 districts across Tillima, Klatzup, Columbia, and of course, Washington Counties. And that is 100,000-plus students, plus thousands of children age birth to five. Our size and the diversity affords our districts a larger economy of scale from any other ESD across Oregon, and you'll be able to see that diversity of services in the plan before you this evening. So our board, I think many of you would know our board members. We have, of course, Becky Timcheck, a lot of you work with her on OSBA, but we have a lot of background in local K-12, we have superintendent, as well as those in sectors representing higher ed, business, and social services. So our board co-develops a local service plan, or actually, our superintendent, with local superintendents and their leaders, that must be approved by our board as well as two-thirds of the boards from our component districts, which of course, TTSD is one of those. And then it must represent 50% of our student population. So Superintendent Goldman works with the 20 superintendents to determine the services and the professional learning that will be offered to our districts. The slide deck provided to you this evening really does a deep dive in those decisions and what will be offered as the 2526 Service Plan. So again, all the districts across the 20, all the superintendents across the 20 districts are part of that process. They develop and then unanimously approve the plan, which includes the core services, and Dan's going to address these further in the slides. Those are services available to all districts, and then there's a menu of services that each district identifies with its service credits or contracting with the ESD team. It also will include Integrated Guidance Technical Assistance Plan, which of course is part of SSA, or the Student Investment Accounts, and the Associated Grant Applications. So how are we working together with Tiger Twalton Kids? The LSP, or the Local Service Plan, is one slice of the services provided to districts from the Northwest Regional ESD. It does not include grants or other value-add services that we execute on behalf of TTSD that we've included that additional information in your pocket so you can gain a complete understanding of the services that we provide. So with that, we're handing off a lot of batons this evening. I'm going to give it right back to Dan, and he'll do a deeper dive into your local service plan. Thank you all.
Okay. Before I, before I get going here, does the board have any questions just about the core features of how we develop the plan with the superintendents, et cetera, before I talk about the specifics? Okay, dope. All right, so just a couple of pieces here that I want to make the, the board aware of. First is, this slide that you're looking at here is a look back to last, to last year. So this is 2023-24 data, but you'll see that you, we, you send your students to outdoor school with us, and it's always interesting when I think about outdoor school, by the way, because when I was in Tiger Twalton, outdoor school was like, we would, we would do like bake sales almost to try to raise funds, and teachers had to donate their time to get outdoor school going, and it was a really big lift for our middle school administrators. Now, we do a lot of that lift here at Northwest Regional ESD, and you can see we have hundreds and hundreds of students who participate in the outdoor school program. We have hundreds of students, 361 last year, in our early childhood special education programs, and those are your future kindergartners with, who have developmental delays and disabilities. And so we do lots of early intervention work in our communities. You can see that we have a number of students who attend our social emotional learning schools. We have Cascade Pacific, Cascade and Pacific Academies, and Columbia Academy, and Levi Anderson, and then a number of students in migrant, our migrant services. And of course, we have a number of staff, over two dozen, about two dozen staff, who are working directly in Tiger Twalton schools, serving you in special education areas. Also, in the ESD, Tiger Twalton is high, has high participation with the ESD on a number of important professional development programs. This is a real market difference from back when I was working with Jill and Maureen, it was on the board, where we really didn't participate with the ESD's instructional services team. We have a fantastic group of people now, working at the ESD, who have been high participation with our ninth grade success programs, attendance services, our career and college readiness programming, and the list goes on. We're, now the ESD has the Oregon Response to Intervention System. We took the contract from the state when Tiger Twalton decided not to do that work anymore, and now TTSD is actually getting support from the ESD in our, in your elementary reading and multi-tiered systems of support work. So like, a lot of participation, a lot of folks in our instructional coaching network as well, that I know Laura Kins was highly involved in as well. Next slide, I think. Oh, okay. I'll just keep, I'll just keep going. So I do want to talk about just the way, and it's in your slide deck, the way that the resources are organized, so the board understands, you know, just the high level, how the resources that come, the state school fund resources that come to ESDs matriculate to services and resources for Tiger Twalton. So in your packet, you'll see a fancy dollar bill, that actually, if you count up the percentages, it makes 110% of a dollar bill. So one thing the ESD can't do is make every dollar, be a dollar and 10 cents, but, but this graphic, as flawed as it is, it gets the job done. So 10% of what, first of all, ESDs, we are taxing entities, right? And so on your local property tax bill, you'll see ESD taxes. We generate revenue for the state, and that goes into the state school fund. A 4.5% of the state school fund goes to ESDs. 10% of that slice, the ESD keeps to keep its lights on and, you know, do the basic operations stuff. The rest of the resources are split 25% and 75%. 25% is that kind of maroon color on your, in your packet, and that's what we call our core services, and these are basically shared services that all the districts who are participating in the ESD, all 20 of our school districts, have access to these resources, and I'm going to go through what those are. And then 75% of the, of those remaining resources go into what we call the ESD Agency Fund, or it's your own district account. And basically, TTSD can choose to purchase services back from the Education Service District or take those funds in transit into your general fund, and you can use it in any manner that you see fit, which is a really different structure than other ESDs, and affords our districts a lot of flexibility around the resources that come to the ESD. So in the next page in your packet, you'll see some information, kind of more technical information about core services and how the plan is developed and the timeline that Maureen talked about. But if you flip to, there's a, there's a part of the packet that has, that says core on the side, and there's basically four buckets of programs. And I'll just call your attention to, to the services within that core, on that core page, because these are all shared services, and basically, these are services that your district receives, you know, kind of for free through the ESD, and it extends in technology from cyber security services to our network services, so the internet and the fiber systems and the connectivity of our districts. They all run through Northwest Regional ESD Fiber, and we link school districts together, and it's, we like to call it the plumbing of the, of the region. That's all through the ESD. The TTSD is now involved in School Link's College and Career Readiness System, and that is through the ESD. You guys will be coming online with the ESD next year. That'll be a service next year that TTSD will participate in. Forecast Five, of course, comes through the ESD and other things like that. The Instructional Services, I just ran through a whole list of services that your district participates with, with our professional educators. And then, of course, you know, we just ran into a couple of weather days, or you, you guys got spared down there in Tiger, but Flash Alert comes through the ESD as well. And then the rest of these slides are really the menu of services or what you would be able to purchase back with ESD resources. And again, the district could always choose to take those resources in transit, but we, and that's just way too much for me to go over, but you'll see, we have services and administration services, like fiscal services and executive coaching, diverse educator pathways, programming, which you all participate in with us, to instructional services that are for purchase through Special Education Services, which is the vast majority of the services that you purchase at the ESD. Like I mentioned before, special school placements and direct service staff for students with more intensive disabilities, and additional technology and early learning services. We also, in the plan, the board by function of the statute, must approve our Student Success Act Technical Assistance Plan. Now it's the Integrated Guidance Technical Assistance Plan. And you'll see in the last, the, one of the last slides there, you'll see the number of services that you have access to for free, the, our support from the Student Success Act. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions that you might have about our service array or how the resources are, are reallocated to the district.
Any questions? Director Miles.
I don't have any questions. I'll just say that in my professional life, I get to work with ESDs all over the state, and I will say that these are under-celebrated entities. ESDs provide invaluable resources, complimentary to many districts at an economy of scale, but in some districts, especially small districts, they provide vital functions that the district simply could not without them. And so I just want to celebrate and recognize ESDs. So thank you so much. Really enjoyed looking through them, and you have services here. Thank you for putting this together.
Yeah, you took the words right out of my mouth in terms of really what an invaluable resource our ESD is, and thank you for working so hard on this presentation and getting all this together and continuing to serve our students in all the ways that you folks do on that board. It really means a lot, because as Director Miles said, there's a lot of things that we couldn't provide and school districts couldn't provide without ESDs, so it's, it's a huge, huge benefit.
And I just want to plus one to what Director Miles said. In my, in my career, I've been able to work with a few ESDs, and I haven't worked with many who are as responsive and proactive at soliciting the needs of the, the districts that they serve. So Superintendent Goldman and his team do an outstanding job of, of getting to know what the needs are in districts and then being responsive and adapting their services towards them. So we're really grateful for the service they provide.
Well, it also might be that Northwest Regional ESD has a slight benefit in knowing what Tiger Twalton needs since they have so many of our prior personnel in their offices and on their board now. But if you liked the, the room, Dan, you know, you could always come back.
Thanks for the offer. I'm not sure Dr. Udo Sanata would agree, but we do have some fantastic staff, and of course, you all, you are, you know, closer to our hearts than the other 20, but don't tell anybody. It's just a public meeting, so.
I like the relationship the way it is.
Just, I wasn't, I wasn't suggesting that Superintendent Goldman would come back to be superintendent here. I'm sure we could find a role for him as school board member or something.
But I wanted to jump in real quickly and tell you all that I had the wonderful opportunity to visit the Early Learning Center in Twalton, and just highly recommend, if that's something that you're interested in, to reach out to the Superintendent Goldman, to Dan. Just, those kids are amazing, and it was just a wonderful experience, and just really grateful to have that opportunity to visit the facility. So just wanted to share that as well.
And if there's no other questions, I would entertain a motion.
I move the Tiger Twalton Board of Directors adopts Resolution 2425-07, authorizing Northwest Regional ESD Local Service Plan for 2025-26 as presented.
Second. Motion is made by Director Zerschmid and seconded by Director Miles. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will move to a quorum vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, guys. All right, and with that, I will move to our final action item, which is the Confidential Manager Contract Agreement with Director Reed.
All right. Good evening. I am here to present to you the confidential and manager agreement that we came into agreement last week for our confidential and managers group. So there were some highlights there that I know I included in the board cover sheet, but matching the COLA 4%, similar to what we gave TTEA, they are also receiving for 24 and 25. Same thing with the insurance, with the increase of 3.4% over the previous year, and for next year, another 3.4% increase over this year's rate. We are also offering them an increase to their medical reimbursement plan, which brings them up to 650, and including three days of vacation payout, which brings them up to 10. Were there any questions on this one? All right.
No. I move that the Tiger Twalton School Board of Directors approve the contract terms between the board and the confidential and manager group as presented.
Second. Motion is made by Vice Chair Highmason, seconded by Director Weston. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Thanks for your work.
Thank you. Hearing none, I'll move to a quorum vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. And with that, I will adjourn this meeting of the Tiger Twalton School.